This meeting of the City of Elizabeth will now come to order. This meeting of the Plainwood City of Elizabeth convenes this Thursday, the 2nd day of August of the year 2012. It has been duly advertised in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, MJSA 1004-6, as a specially scheduled meeting published by the annual meetings scheduled. Notice that this meeting has been furnished to Starlight on Friday, the 27th of January 2012. Notice that the cases we heard were also published in Starlight at least 10 days before today. Martin, please go to the floor.
Councilman Ballman, Commissioner Gonzalez, Commissioner Caballero, Commissioner Melas, Commissioner Brown, here. Secretary Urban, Commissioner Shalhoub, Commissioner Fennec, here. Vice Mayor Walz, Chairman Haas.
Here. Secretary Urban rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, just as it is. First in order of business this evening is to approve minutes of previous meeting of July 12th and motion. So moved by Commissioner Shalhoub, seconded by Commissioner Brown. One correction required, Commissioner Nunes was not present. Needs to be put down in the absence list. And then in court roll.
Commissioner Caballero, aye. Aye. Commissioner Melas?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown? Secretary Urban? Commissioner Shalhoub?
Aye.
Commissioner Nunes? Chairman Haas?
Aye. Thank you. Resolutions before the Board, PO 2-11, 541-545, South Front Street, New York terminals, 2 LLC, property in question is block 4, lots 1448, 1449, and 1467. I have a motion to move the resolution. Moved by Commissioner Urban, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Martin, please go to the floor.
Commissioner Caballero, aye. Commissioner Melas?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown? Aye. Commissioner Shalhoub?
Aye.
Chairman Haas?
Aye. In the matter of P O 7-12, 309 Mars Avenue, there is two minor revisions that I just want to draw your attention to depending on which version of the resolution you have in front of you. There was a, you should have the correct one, but there was a spelling error. The first one was the graphic and just to point that the conditions that have been put forward, the lights on that board will dim at sunset every evening to the level of 5% of brightness. Sign will be turned off at midnight and reactivated at dawn. There will be a minimum timer of 45 seconds in the suite between sign changes on bill board. And after six months, the applicant will meet with our attorney, our city planner, and other code officials to review the operation of the sign and see whether any of those conditions can be boosted. So may I have a motion to approve this resolution? Commissioner Caballero?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Secretary Urban. Martin, please go to the floor.
Commissioner Caballero? Aye. Commissioner Melas?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown? Aye. Secretary Urban? Aye. Excuse me?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Shalhoub?
Aye.
Commissioner Nunes? Aye. Chairman Haas?
Aye. In the matter of P O 812, 022, 2925 Smith Street, on taxi cab number 7-1197, I have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Brown.
Second.
Seconded by Secretary Urban, who were present last month, Commissioner Melas, Commissioner Shalhoub, Commissioner Urban, Commissioner Brown, and myself. Martin, please go to the floor.
Commissioner Melas?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown? Aye. Commissioner Shalhoub?
Aye.
Chairman Haas?
Aye.
The last resolution is, not the last, the last resolution memorialized application, P O 912, Peter Swetlow, the property in question, 1166 and 1168-1170, this value. Those of us who are eligible to vote are Commissioner Shalhoub, Commissioner Brown, and myself. Martin, please go to the floor.
Is anyone able to vote in?
Second, Commissioner, Secretary? Tell me, did you, did you second it?
No, we did not.
No, we did not.
We did not motion, motion.
No motion, sorry. May I have a motion on this?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Shalhoub is the only other one. Second. Second. So again, the only ones who can vote on this are Commissioner Shalhoub, Commissioner Brown, and myself.
Commissioner Brown? Aye. Commissioner Shalhoub?
Aye.
Chairman Haas?
Aye.
We have a resolution to appoint a special conflict council to represent the City of Elizabeth Plainwood for the purpose of hearing applications directed to him by the Board by the Board Attorney. We have had the honor of having Mark Brown as Squire as our special conflict council for the past several years, and I guess we neglected to appoint him earlier this year. So we are appointing him as a special conflict council to legal services in the period of August 1st, 2012, and July 31st, 2013. We have a motion in front of you, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Caballero. Martin, please go to the floor.
Commissioner Caballero? Aye. Commissioner Melas?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown? Aye. Secretary Urban?
Aye.
Commissioner Fennec?
Aye.
Chairman Haas?
Aye.
Okay. We're going to do this by starting with the other business first.
For the benefit of the members of the Board, I have a petition. For the benefit of the Board, I have a petition, counsel regarding matters on the agenda before this evening, so I'm recusing myself, Mr. Brown will be serving as counsel.
As I started, under the vice counsel, we're going to start with the development view here that's listed, sorry, we're going to start with the cotton, with the other business first. No, the other business first, the Vegas Center, Conserc, we're going to do the revised registry redevelopment plan superseding the amendment previously granted through on April 12th, 2005. The future plan to develop construction, residential units, the park, organic retail units, and related amenities, and MRC, MRC zone, Mr. Fennec, MRC or MRC?
This is, this is, MRC.
MRC zone, I was going to say the MRC, sorry. MRC zone, so there's the title. Mr. Fennec, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fennec. You're a solid man, sir. And if you ask me, I'm able to help you with anything.
I do, Mr. Fennec, City Planner, City of Elizabeth, City of Elizabeth. What's for you tonight, what previous year, redevelopment study, maybe the share of redevelopment and redevelopment plan back in 2005. There is for high density development on the old Berry Business Plan area, which is about 100% purpose coverage. We permitted that a, we were once permitting a new site plan application for a multitude of mixed development on this very large street parcel that consisted of redevelopment. Since that time, this was approved back in 2005, we had problems of 2009 in real estate business, quite a bit, and not constructed. Since 2000 until now, my office has met with a number of developers looking at this parcel. And almost all the developers are looking at this parcel, looking at it for a large box retail. My office, along with the director of all some planning, have met over time to put us meeting with developers and have discussions, I'm sorry. We met with different developers and had discussions about three different developments to begin construction of this facility. What also always came up was the lack of servicing for this general area of Lloyd's Box Retail. We looked at the 200 one mile service ring around this area, find out the amount of population that this area has, that's why I had this one mile service area. Then you mark the amount of Lloyd's Box Retail, the highway, and where it services this area, and you'll find what you want. So the discussions with City Hall and directors were not an objection to modifying this redevelopment good, redevelopment plan to specifically permit Lloyd's Box Retail. We come into this facility, we also increase some of the current building. The scene here is that we've got this little transition there. Any new, in fact, to check, I did need some new developers, someone strictly wanting to go with Lloyd's Box Retail. And I've always suggested, please don't give up on doing mixtures. Any new type of park, company, enclosed parcel, we have some that have mono problem apps, have done very well, directors, they seem very proud on new apartments, closed parcel to the airport. Not only this facility, closed parcel, it's directly loving the closest train, the next closest train station to get off, ride the mono road to the airport. So through discussion again, in City Hall and with other developers, we've proposed to modify the redevelopment, make recommendations for modification, then forward it on to the City Council. City Council, read with open eyes, they would then modify, make improvements, not in business, let the way it is, and then make recommendation, modify the plan, previously approved by the Board, recommendation, send it up to council, and then council will include the recommendation that we do. And I'll briefly go through the red line, Martin, change.
Excuse me, can you, I don't know, the mic is going.
Yeah. Yeah, this mic doesn't, I'll have to speak a little closer to the mic there, it sounds a little better. So this document, where the previous redevelopment, and we did have to play some large box retail on the previous redevelopment plan.
Correct.
But this, we're just solidified it in language here, making it a little bit more bit of language in there. And then you already saw where it is the RC Regional Commercial Zone, we adapted the RC's though, we created for Kia originally. We modified, we modified the redevelopment and natural plan, and land use map says five means an RC Regional Commercial Zone. So we're looking to modify this, and the Regional Commercial Zone is a zone that was created, was created many years ago, I would say about 20 years ago, to permit large scale retail. In fact, it was created to coincide with Kia down by the airport. So it was a zone that was created to permit theaters, multi-story theaters, large retail in Elizabeth, which all those, and we mean commercial zones, did not permit retail for this size of activity. So the modification, the kind of weekly redevelopment plan states specifically, the large, and I'll go from principal permitted usage on page 12.
Sorry, say that again.
I'll go from page 12, why the redevelopment plan, under principal usage permitted. The new language stays under item A1. The new languages, the old languages, everything was in the RC Regional Commercial Zone, but we added, including large scale retail business, parentheses, big box retail, which may have several different commercial stores within the same building.
Always. Back when, back when, when this was, this is about, show your microphone. There was large commercial box approval?
That's correct.
Right? Okay. So what words, it's hard to hear, so what words, what are changing in the language?
Is this being more specific, Mr. Chairman? It's just standing language like big box retail.
Big box? Is there such, in the world of attorneys and land use, is there such a word as big box retail?
Yes, there is.
There is. And it's not in West, it's in the attorney involved.
Yes. And excuse me, these modifications in your report are on page 9, so sorry about that. We, for all of the pledge of such allegiance. So yes, in the realty world, box retail is a, yes it is.
It's acceptable phrase.
Yes, it is.
What does it mean?
It means exactly that, a retailer occupies a large square footage of building.
A single building.
Single building. You know, I always say a lawyer, they always say, you're 20,000 square feet.
Okay. But in that big box, could there be more than one retail operation?
Yes, yes, there is.
So it's a multi-big box.
It gives the developer flexibility, if you go to one retailer for the big box.
I think we had that when we approved this many years ago, with the multi-big box.
So as in discussions with attorneys, developers, they wanted the redevelopment retail, so the City Hall feel that the redevelopment should be more specific.
More specific?
More specific.
Well, you come up with the words the last time, because you were here when we did that, so.
I'll be more specific.
You'll be more specific this time.
Yes, I am.
Now, if there's a third time, you're going to be more specific there? Okay.
Another, another item also, it's item 2, the permitted uses will be rental units. When we originally looked at rental units on page 9, principal usage permitted, item 2, residential condominiums. Where the original permitted use for residential, where are any rental units in there? Again, when we were looking at this back in 2005, the mortgage situation, the mortgage was much different than it is today. And the success of good quality rental units near North Airport and near this train station, I feel warrant modifying this plan now to permit developers to build rental units.
Yes.
There's a very small percentage, even back in 2005, we gave a very small percentage to go to re-better, very small, so there really one and two better areas.
Well, number one, I'm not big on rentals. We had an unfortunate situation in Woodbridge, New Jersey, that was rented out, and was supposed to be rented for 200 people, and we find out there was 400 people renting in that facility. Rentals, we lose control, one of its rentals, the city loses control, I would rather see condos as opposed to rentals. If ownership always gives people more feeling that they're part of something, when you rent, it's come and go, it's a transit situation, but what do I have?
And a lot of this, 2001, 1999, we have 2000 and 2008, there was no shortage of building condominiums in Houston, where we just support those condominiums. But over the last three, four years, rentals have been the only thing driving the growth of the market in New Jersey, and I can say that across the country. And they've been successful in Elizabeth, and.
Victor, we had pioneer homes from the glory round, which were rentals. We did a great thing in this city, did a great thing. We created ownership for those people, and ask anyone who's living down here today, what difference has made in that neighborhood?
But not all those gyms are owned there, a lot of them are owned by a management company and rented out. I believe many of them are. I believe that the last part, one of the last projects down there, which was supposed to be market rate, well, we can blame this because they could not sell.
We're having some difficulty.
Is there a way that we can put something in here has to market rate rentals, rather than, you know, we don't want to see it become more affordable housing, we don't want to see it become, you know, difficult situation. I think that the commissioner was referring to Aganell, I believe, if I think of that project there in Aganell, was not high quality building project. Yeah, well, it's interesting, we had this, we performed this study with the City of Elizabeth, Susan Uche was a big part of that study.
With the City Hall?
With the City Hall, Susan Uche was a very big part of that.
Susan Uche.
Performing that study, a number of years ago, we looked into what type of renting units were built in the state of Elizabeth. And the brand structure of renting units was 50% you found were affordable. So it was considered affordable in the state of New Jersey. We already built, those are all market rates. So the builders in the state of Elizabeth of rental apartments build art, I feel pretty good quality rental units that fit within the affordability range. And that's why we don't have to have many experience in City of Elizabeth, because most of the builders don't understand the market. And we found that very interesting, petition to state before the dissolution of COA, to adjust some of our COA rehab obligation numbers, being that a typical Elizabeth market rate rental is an affordable unit. They wanted to de-restrict, de-restrictures, though they didn't care what, what we, our study showed over the last five, 10 years, the state, you know, it's a vicious story, the state still said there must be de-restriction on units.
It must be what?
There must be a de-restriction on the affordable units. So just, you feel that there's nothing being designated in this, but what is designated in this redevelopment plan, the previous plan, is only 50% of the units can be re-bettered. So normally, we look at transit oriented rental units to be normally only one and two better type of units anyway, that's definitely.
You referred to a project on Madison Avenue that was recently completed and opened, that originally, I believe, when it was being built.
Mr. Kahal, for all.
Right, that zoning board that, that I think originally was contemplated to be condominium.
Correct.
And the market currently is not supporting that, it's very hard for people to get mortgages today, but that building went out and rented out, I believe that building was sold.
Yeah, on a smaller scale, Kahal purchased an old warehouse that was abandoned in the last day, a few blocks of this development, converted it into market rate rental apartments. And that building is 100% occupied, the discussion was Mr. Kahal, and it's been very well. And in my observations over time, I've been noticing enormous, in my observations, driving past the development over time, the last few years, I've noticed enormous amount of airport related, airline related occupancy at that building. So what we've always felt at City Hall, that if we build a new market rate rentals near the airport, that they will move, that they will sell. And we go to this location, really does service that part, and that's what, now, just because this is a plan, does not mean to help us with building it. I mean, this is what we're permitting to occur in the city. And hopefully, the city goes with the contract with the right developer. We not only get some type of retail there, box retail, or specialty retail, but we also get some residential being, the proximity of this development, so close to major train station, moment, towards these corridors. So we feel that this area is very conducive to that, it was the area that was covered, I feel, I think 100%, by building and asphalt. And we're hoping, you know, it has ability to model, so Elizabeth gives a nice new development in this area. Again, if you're saying about the surrounding areas of North Elizabeth and Southern Northern, but this area, there should not be a lot of retail for those types of, to service the city. So we, in Elizabeth, as we all know, we have a lot of specialty retail. Specialty retail, building, we consider it as 20 feet wide, 50 feet deep, 60 feet deep, about 1200 square feet, which is the work, and you can take one store or two stores, there's plenty of specialty retail. We don't, so we're not looking to add a lot of additional specialty retail, we already have a large street, which was that, looking to add more of a box retail to go to find Route 22. So some of the that live in the area who is Elizabeth, does not have to be in a vehicle truck, including my two, to go do some box shopping.
Just because I do, yeah, it's a big box. Just because it's in the, in the revised plan, doesn't mean that's what's going to happen.
Doesn't mean it will be built correctly, we're given the option. I also have done a number of box retail along Route 22 in Union, we've also designed box retail at Linden along Route 9, and simply what's going on in Linden and the. in Linden and the old GM plant and the old airport. So, you've had box retail who went to these areas and people from Elizabeth were shopping like this, so they could call us and etc.
Interesting too, the site is right along the railroad tracks. Everything that's built there is going to be highly visible to people passing by that site. And that might attract people or the beauty to further kind of south into New York. This is a much closer location to train station.
And the box retailers are normal, they want to be along Route 22, or Route 1 and 9, something a little bit visitor, so, uh, this is something, but, uh, the projection is that within the neighborhood, within that one mile radius, uh, the retailers, they know their market, whether they're in either, uh, are hoping that if they have enough of a market there to support these types of units, which are normally placed along the larger arterial roadways within the state, along State High. So, you know, this is something that's, it's not a quarter of a town, and, uh, the developer feels, hopefully a future developer feels that, as they don't want to build a single box, they can build multi-tenant.
Do you have any changes?
Well, the biggest change I felt was the changing residential condominiums, because this board was very, for, for many years, we were very tough on it, and so was City Hall, so was, the administration of City Hall are tough on condominium, uh, but it's just, again, it's just for ownership. Uh, there's nothing, that includes some of the most condominiums from renting out to somebody else. You can't stop that.
Have any, have any of the partial requirements changed on site and all these things?
Some, some minor, well, the ratios are still the same. Uh, we committed to, we probably we don't permit to go down to the last step. Uh, the original proposal was 1.8 for a one bed open, 1.3 for two bedrooms, sort of averages out to a spacing unit. Normally, this board, uh, normally we look at a 1.25 ratio, 1.5 ratio, but, you know, my office, and especially the developers feel that because this location is being so close to mass transit, being so close to not only mass transit, direct service, uh, to major areas, uh, and northeast, um, that we can close those ratios. And there is ability here to do a lot of shared market because of the retail and residential. We can have the shared...
The, the, uh, first item here, just to catch my attention, office retail commercial space shall apply 3.25 parking space in each thousand square feet. That would apply to the big box too as well.
Yeah, we'll let it go a little like, uh, normally, you know, big box, only even big box wants to be 500,000, you know, or 40,000 ratio, we're letting it go a little less. Uh, we feel hopefully that, uh, we get some walk up traffic and the, the shared area.
Are there's things that you want us to note?
Just, again, the, to go into what my office and the meeting with people over time is, uh, as a pioneer for quite some, quite some time here, I felt it would be a shame just to let this, it all become box retail. I would like to see this box city to, what's the, the train station, in next year's development. And so, the city, you know, I've spoken, I've mentioned that this, I have mentioned this in the past, I have spoken with, uh, city business administrator, who do negotiation with the developer, we're looking to come to the city business. Uh, we've always expressed, uh, my opinion, and I feel the words are needed also, but we, we worked on this for some time, that, uh, this large parcel, these three parcels of land are quite large, like mine all three, and it would be behooves the city of Elizabeth to have a nice use of development on the north end of Elizabeth, along the Davenport.
A question in relation to the, to the, uh, building that's on the site now, remnants of the cookie factory. The original plan that we saw back then had portion of that building remain as the base system residential. I would assume under the circumstances, that building will have to be removed totally?
It sure appears that way, uh, but as we go into, in fact, later on, say, the perspective developer, or give a presentation of this board, but, uh, it's all according to the damage to that building was extensive. And, uh, I don't know if any building out there can be saved now, even the, even the portion that was for that, the way the buildings had connected, uh, I don't know if any developer have included their structural analysis, and they do villages, there's a layout of the building, ceiling heights, uh, fire exits and fire codes, if you can save any building up there. It's a shame, uh, the buildings were built in time with very thick concrete walls and, uh, and openness areas, uh, the fire can do as much, small fire, that started out to be a small fire, can do as much damage to that building.
Any other building with walls or floors not as thick as that, from now in that fire, burn them for six days, and it's amazing that it's still standing.
Yeah, it admits heat generated by that fire basement, and admits heat yet deteriorated in steel, and, uh, a major problem, structural problem to that building.
You need to talk to any of your diarists in this, uh, year ago?
No, the, the diarists, uh, give really proof in these reviews for a state, but one diagram actually gives three lots of volunteer, uh, page. The same three lots, it's just that, again, I feel the, uh, the biggest change based on the way we improve developments, with implementing the large, and this is just development, this original redevelopment permits a lot of this. This is not really sticked to build construction on this project, but once you get above four or five stories height, this is 40, 40 floor expensive type of construction to build. This is not, this is, you're not your typical wood framed development, this is a mid-rise type of development, falls under a different code, so, uh, we permit a lot of this here. The developers, they're looking to go beyond the box retail, we can go to structured parking, which we call deck parking, and deck parking is not inexpensive. And then from there, you know, go vertical to your condominium units in your parking which, again, that's not inexpensive to build, so, you know, I, I don't foresee the, uh, if there is a residential component constructed eventually after, uh, because of the value of the parking, I don't see it being, you know, what we call stick built, inexpensive square foot investment development. But this board will have a set in any development activity, as proposed here, they will have a set and a look, a feel of that development. This board does have a set, and it's facade treatments, lighting, and the general look of this development, so this is just the first aspect of, you know, permitting new developers to look at this property and to come in with their design with this board and approve this board.
Take your word for it, question, where's the city line?
Yeah, the city line, where's the city line?
Question again, anyone?
Victor, where is Elizabeth's city line and Newark line begin?
It doesn't show, it's bad copy, but there's three lots, and if you look at this, uh, Haxton Lot, in the inner report.
In the report, yeah.
But this one, this is the area, first map, yeah, this one, this is the one I'm looking at right here.
Yeah.
If you, if you look at that, there's a lot to the north, that's also going to be built, plan, elevation, 848, you can't tell 848 to the Texas, so, right?
That's where the line is?
The line is not even, northern part of that lot, mine is the Ginny Street. Somewhere in here, the report...
How, how, but how far?
800, I saw the number, 840 feet to the north.
840 feet?
Right, to the northeast, which is far, somewhere in here, 400 feet. Why not? Talking about, anterior municipalities on page 14, last, the last paragraph, anterior municipalities, the random development area is not contiguous to any other municipal boundaries. However, the city of Newark's boundary is located in close proximity to the site approximately 840 plus or minus feet to the northeast, along Newark Avenue. I believe that's the Ginny Street, when you go up past, what is that, Madison, what is the park, Madison, what's the park up there? Of course, Wilson Park, at the end of Wilson Park, Maginney Street is the next street, and I believe you can look right down the middle of Maginney Street. So, it's about a full block.
I think it's two blocks, I think it's two, three blocks.
I wasn't sure, I had to, I went closer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're welcome. Victor, any other comments regarding this?
No.
Do you have any board members have a question? Mr. Menager on the presentation of the revised Durant redevelopment plan? What we, we need to make a motion to send this to City Council?
Make a motion for a work of a day.
Need a motion to recommend this for permission of the development plan to City Council for their action. Motion, Director Ervin second by Commissioner Brown. Mark, please call the roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Mills?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Deputy Director Ervin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chantrell?
Aye.
Chair, your honor, what's up? Commissioner Nunez, question, yes? Commissioner Nunez, he said aye.
Commissioner House, aye too. I'm going to take a short break and come back in about five minutes, I mean, this. Okay, we're going back to the session. Next, uh, item on here, if I can get my word, there's a development review here, uh, on T1112, 891, we're getting a neighbor center concept plan, a proposal superseded the venue's approval on April 12, 2005, huge plan to develop a construction, commercial residential units, parking deck and retail units related to the venue's in the RC zone, Mr. King.
And you sit here, it's one of my, I don't know. You get the old voice, right? Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, sorry, I'm not being disruptive, I'm respectful to the left side. Um, I'm looking, um, here on behalf of, uh, Durant redevelopment properties, we had originally scheduled to come in for a concept, but since the planning board is moving ahead with the recommendations for the amendments to the Durant redevelopment plan, uh, my suggestion would be not do anything tonight, we submitted pictures and the plan that is very consistent with the proposed draft that you had, and what we really tried to do is make it more functional, and make it more buildable, and make it economically feasible based upon the, uh, circumstances that we're all facing. Uh, my suggestion would be we'd certainly be happy to come back next month, I know that there was a notice given for this hearing, I believe that there's another step process that is also part of that, obviously subject to council, you were referring to the same one, you don't know what you're talking about, but, uh, it seems to me that in the way that this is, if in fact the government body puts this up at the first reading, we have an amendment to the redevelopment plan. I think the planning board also needs to ensure that the changes that are being made in the actual Durant redevelopment plan is in fact consistent with your master plan. I know Mr. Menager and his office are aware of that, uh, so it seems to me to be the most feasible for you, at least like I said, Victor, be able to talk to the appropriate people in the administration, so the reexamination report, along with a master plan amendment, if in fact necessary, could be done, so it is all consistent, because if you don't do it that way, I don't think you're consistent with, uh, case law that's come down since going, and the number of cases, and that's pretty significant. It's not hard to do, and my suspicion is if the government body, the City Council, uh, takes action at its next meeting, it'll be coming back to you for your next planning board meeting anyway, Mr. Chairman.
Maybe that's, because it's summer schedule, I don't believe they're meeting every week. They're meeting once during the month of August.
They are.
At the first reading, second reading will take place in September, and I believe our board meeting in September is...
Before the 9th. Which is, which is between the two readings, I think from that, if that's in, in cities.
So, I'm not sure that what you're saying is done by council, twice, and then the 9th.
Number 6.
Number 6, okay.
Yeah, that, that is the first reading, and then it would be back to you on the normal process between the first and second readings.
Correct.
So, uh, as long as the board will come to mind, I would just ask respectfully, that at least from your level, that Mr. the neighbor's office be authorized to proceed, whatever is necessary. Can you make sure everything becomes at least efficient?
It's not, Mr. King, the thought was based on case law, and a reexamination hasn't been performed through our master plan, since 2000 year earlier, uh, that, that he is, you know, based on case law now, uh, this area, a couple of other areas, should be, uh, what the, I think you and I have had this discussion a couple of weeks ago in regards to the master plan, since it was 2000, I believe 2003, if I'm not mistaken, uh, we are now nearly 10 years later, and I believe that at this time, that we look not only at this area, but set up, you know, get council approve this, and set up a review committee like we had several years ago, and look at areas, invite the council people in, give us opinions of their neighborhoods and what changes need.
Yeah, I think we, we, there should be a wholesale look again, but in the meantime, to be, uh, within, within the legal world, I think we should do a reexamination report addressing not only this area, but the Wathorne area that has seen, uh, another redevelopment area that has simply created this year alone, and include those before we do a wholesale change, to get those, uh, within the legal parameters.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think Victor is right, it's like you thought we still would work this, uh, it seems to me that you can do it incrementally, as we've got the gaps in City of Elizabeth, where you can just look at it, be examined for this area and the ones that you've just talked about, but then there's a going reexamination.
There are some other areas that called my attention the last couple of months that, that really, uh, have changed so dramatically from the last view that, that the area's use is still a little different, and the, and, and of course, there are areas in those areas that are grandfathered in, but anytime they want to do anything, they've got to go to zoning board, they have permission to do it, so several of our buildings are finding, several of our companies in town are finding very difficult to do business under those circumstances, and they've come to myself and Mr. Menager, we need to talk to council people, we need to talk to others. But Vic, having a, we, we can just make recommendation, yes, send a letter to the, uh, director of policy planning, make recommendation to, uh...
And council, Mark Brown tells me that we need a motion, we need to do that.
Make recommendation to the director of policy planning, Mr. Billy Royer, uh, to go ahead and, uh, perform a reexamination, uh, of the master plan.
to go ahead and perform a reexamination of the master plan.
So, just the letter?
And to make necessary revisions, if needed, to the master plan and for the redevelopment of the...
Of this, of, yeah, of this, of Baker Center.
Despite all the new redevelopment areas.
Excuse me, the plan that was approved in 2005, is that gone, or is that still, it's still in effect with, with the adjustments that you're talking about? So, this whole concept has been approved by this board?
Yep.
Okay? And the difference being that it was never acted upon because of other circumstances?
That's correct.
Okay. So, as far as this board is concerned, this development of the Durant building, old Durant building, whatever you want to call it, Newark area, that has been approved. The things that could, there could be changes in the name of the developer, is that possible? There could be changes in the big box, boxes, boxes. Okay, the stories that we're, we're talking about, other than that, this whole thing has been approved.
Was approved, but there is recent case law that says, maybe, I'm, I'm sorry, it was approved, but there is recent, more recent case law that says we have to ensure every item is done against the cross, and I'm just suggesting the process. I know Mark is very aware of it also.
You know, I'm, so that although it was approved, it has to be re-approved or re...
It has to be slightly redone, Mr. Mayor.
Slightly redone, so, in concept, it's done.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
City Council goes, well, the recommendations is done.
Soon, they will. So, do, do we need a motion? We need a motion to make a recommendation to Mr. Reyes, the City Council, sorry, to, to have a master plan, a reexamination performed of the master plan, to include the redevelopment areas that have incorporated by City Council over the last 18 months.
Okay. Can I have a motion to that effect, please? Make a motion. Mr. Melish, seconded by...
Second.
Secretary Erving, I refer to, but, Mr. Mr. Shalbro, make that. Mark, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Melish?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Secretary Gergen?
Aye.
Commissioner Shalbro?
Aye.
Commissioner Muntz?
Aye.
Chairman Moss?
Aye.
Thank you. I think only, I think you really, this was not, so you're carrying any actions there when that's not to, you're carrying that's not to, to the September 6.
Concept, concept plan would carry this, that, really, September 6 meeting would go for...
No further notice, along with the fact that this was given, that you might take another action under the reexamination report, so, along with the fact that you might also be taking other actions, being for reexamination board or a master. That's all. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Your word, Mr. King. It's thank you for the advice. Our noted expert in the field of planning, and we thank you for the information you've given us. Commissioners, there is no additional business to seek, we may have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Enjoy the wonderful august.